Good evening. Hello. Ladies, gentlemen, my mic actually doesn't work. You won't hear it, so you'll hear my voice only. They'll hear me on TV. So at the cost of sounding loud to start the meeting, good evening and Happy New Year to everybody. I appreciate you all being here tonight. My name is Charles Press. I'm your Chief of Police here in Key Biscayne. Rapidly approaching my 15th year in the Key and my 45th year in law enforcement. So when it comes to things that we're going to talk about tonight, I think I have a pretty good idea of some of the issues coming from Miami Beach after 30 years and the traffic issues we had there and the obvious things that we deal with here on the Key. I think I'm reasonably experienced enough to answer any of your questions and I look forward to you all asking me whatever it is you want. I will tell you tonight's a free forum for you. I'm not looking to duck questions. I'm not looking to avoid questions, so feel free to ask anything you wish. I will say one thing. Peter back there, one of our wonderful IT guys, has the microphone. In order for this to go over the TV, when you ask a question, you have to use a microphone. So I'll ask you to please wait until Peter hands it to you. That way the folks in TV land can hear your questions. For those of you who have these wonderful little cell phones, if you could politely silence them or vibrate them, I would appreciate that. And on behalf of our council, and I see several of our council members here tonight, our village manager is here, they've allowed me this opportunity to speak to you all about what I consider is the most important issue that we're dealing with here on the Key in this 2019-2020 time and moving into the future, and that's our traffic and our pedestrian safety here on Key Biscayne. Approximately a year ago, we did a village-wide survey. And that survey talked about all the services provided by the government of Key Biscayne. We had quite a bit of respondents and they were very honest, sometimes things that we didn't want to hear. However, those are things that we need to correct and we've gone about trying to do those things. And one of the things that you all said about the police department was that we didn't do enough traffic enforcement. And that was a number-one priority, believe it or not, was to help alleviate the traffic issues that we have here on the Key as best we can, but also to have a stronger enforcement effort. Something that through my years here on the Key and throughout my years in law enforcement, it's never something that's enjoyable. I can tell you that having this discussion with my police officers has not been the most well-received dealings with that I've had with them, and I'll explain to you why. Cops like to have the opportunity to use discretion, and I allow our officers a tremendous amount of that. However, when you're implementing a program such as this where you have to take action in almost every case, then we kind of take a lot of that discretion away from them. And that's difficult. We're very autonomous. You notice that 99% of the cops you'll ever see are by themselves. We work by ourselves. We handle a lot of calls unfortunately by ourselves just due to staffing issues. So cops are very used to being on their own and making those types of decisions themselves. I will tell you that the direction that we have given our police officers is we do not want citations to be written for no reason at all or for reasons that aren't a matter of public safety. And I think that's really important. We're not looking to write somebody who doesn't have their car registration with them, which by the way is a violation, or if their license plate happens to be out of date, which is a violation, or if they don't have their insurance card, which is a violation. What we're looking to do, and the opportunity here to make Key Biscayne safer, is to change driving attitudes. The only way to do that, the only proven way to do that, is through enforcement. Enforcement hurts. Enforcement by the mere word speaks of unhappiness. You're kind of taking away somebody's privilege. You're stopping them in the middle of the street. Mommies have kids in the cars. Daddies are coming home from work. Grandparents. Everybody is involved in this effort. And so when I charge our officers with doing this type of a program, I demand several things from them. Number one, first and foremost, is a professional delivery of our service. It is paramount that when you're dealing with the public, you deal with them in the most professional, polite way possible. Stopping somebody to issue them a traffic citation doesn't generally create a love fest between a driver and a police officer. And there are times when it could be cantankerous, abusive. Sometimes it gets physical. And unfortunately, at times, many times across the country, the number-one killer of police officers on calls we go to are traffic stops. So officers are very concerned regardless of where they are when they make a traffic stop. They're trained to be concerned. They're trained to be attentive and as polite as the situation dictates. However, I encourage my officers to never let their guard down, meaning they're not going to necessarily walk up with a huge smile on their face and a kumbaya and see how your holiday was or things of that nature. They're going to be very businesslike and at the end of the day, doing their job, and they'll do it the right way. I think since we've really started doing traffic enforcement since 2012, I've got one complaint. And by the way, it was legit. And we happened to see it on one of our body cams. And we had to take corrective action against that officer. Wasn't terrible. It wasn't horrific, but it was not the type of service that we provide and not the attitude that we wish our officers to convey. And it was brought on by somebody who didn't like receiving a legal ticket and was angry about it and kind of got the best of our officer. So if you hear me talking about this in public, you could see that we're very transparent and we don't allow and we can't allow our officers to get caught up in the moment. But I could tell you that some of the actions by people, such as a driver who kind of reflected on this is why cops get killed when he received his citation. And the officer bit his tongue thankfully and just wished the gentleman to drive safely and turn around and went back to his duties. Or some of the other wonderful things that if I brought some of these videos, you would be really surprised at how disrespectful people can be to these police officers simply doing their jobs. So we've got a demand from the community. That's the number-one thing. Number two, we've got a village council and a village manager that support that community demand. In fact, we've got some of them here in this room that actually ran part of their political ticket on creating more enforcement here in the village of Key Biscayne. And then the third thing, and the thing that bothers me the most and the thing that impresses me more than anything on why we do this, is because we've got your families out here. And we take that responsibility very seriously. That is our job, police officers, to ensure that the public remains safe. And the only way for us to do this is to go out there and actually do our jobs. So although we're directed by a survey or suggested to do something by a survey and directed by a council and a manager, the real reason we love doing what we do in spite of having to enforce is because we want your kids to go home safe every day as well as you. And we say to ourselves, not on our watch. And that's how we take a look at how we police here in Key Biscayne. So I want to talk a little bit before we get into the Q and A about 2012 when we started our first traffic unit. We really started to involve ourselves in traffic enforcement. We brought on a team of two motorcycle officers that wrote a staggering number of citations between the two of them in one year. They wrote almost 1,400 citations here in Key Biscayne. Two guys going out there five days a week, just doing their job. These citations were all critical citations. They were stop signs. They were red light violations. They were speed violations. They were school zone violations. Anything that was critical to life safety, that's all they did out there. And the unique thing about these two officers was they were a couple of really good-looking guys. And I would hear women actually comment and say, "Chief, tell me where your motor guys are going to be today because we're going to speed past them." But on top of that, the way they delivered the message and the way they did their job was so well-accepted by the community that in the time that they stayed together, I did not receive one single complaint. And people from the mayor and family on down to 1,400 other people received at some point in time a citation. And people accepted the fact that they made a mistake and we were out there doing our jobs. So that was 2012. In 2013, that number rose to 1,600. And then we hit the snag. And this is where staffing is so critical to what we do. We started losing due to either retirement, injury, sickness, this, that, or the other. We started losing manpower. And unfortunately, when you're a small organization and you have to develop your policies and the way you operate based on minimum staffing, we lost the opportunity to have these freewheeling traffic units go out there by themselves and attend to traffic. So we had to incorporate them back into a regular daily squad where they answered calls, answered watch orders, wrote reports, and did the things that the everyday cop does and patrol. And on top of that, in their spare time, they could go out there and they could write citations. The result in 2014 was 746 tickets. We were down by 50%. In 2015, we wrote 1,033 tickets. These are, I'm not even talking about the warnings that we wrote. 2016, 946. And then 2017 and 2018, after the survey came out and we started engaging every police officer in public safety and to go out there, do their job, 1,500 and 1,400. So let's go speed up to today. We are now at full staffing with the exception of one officer. We have rekindled our traffic unit. And since December 18th, we have written 218 citations to traffic unit alone and issued 120 warnings. Now those 120 warnings would have all been citations, but we kind of played Santa Claus a little bit and we felt it was the right thing to do. We wanted to stop drivers who were violating the law. And if it wasn't an egregious incident, we offered them the opportunity to take a warning and maybe rethink how their driving habits are. When you're talking about the driving habits of our Key Biscayne residents and the visitors that come in, one thing comes to focus more than anything, and it's called distracted driving. I challenge everybody in here, when you're driving down the street, to look, if it's safe, at every car you pass, especially if you're in rush hour traffic. It's really easy to do. And you will find this mounted in a hand. The other morning, I saw a woman doing her eyes and had the phone right here while she was driving on H-78 where I live down south. It was stunning. And she actually did a pretty good job for a distracted driver. But the bottom line is, had something come out in front of her, had I had a blowout and my car shifted, we would have had a tragedy there because she had no control of her vehicle. So this is the number-one dynamic that is hurting our people, not just us, but the United States. This has replaced DUI as the number-one killer on the highways, distracted driving. It's replaced DUI, folks. I want to reiterate that. DUI has killed an average of 50,000 to 60,000 people a year in the United States, and this has now outgained DUIs. So you can understand the impact. You also have our young children who see their parents using these. And what are our kids going to do? They're only the clones of what they learn at home and what they learn from their peers. So the kids are using these also. Speed. And we have some very interesting statistics on speed. When we did our pedestrian study on Camden Boulevard, something showed its head that is pretty remarkable. If you're doing 20 miles an hour and you hit a pedestrian, that pedestrian has a nine-in-10 chance to survive. So if you're doing 20 miles an hour and you hit a cyclist or a pedestrian, nine out of 10 times, that cyclist survives. If you raise that speed to 30 miles an hour, only five in 10 will survive that collision. If you raise it to 40 miles an hour, one in 10. So Camden Boulevard right now is 30 miles an hour. The general rule of law has always been in most places, and I welcome one of our new officers, Marcos Diaz. He is a traffic expert. I want to give you a little quick background on Marcos. He just joined our department after 13 years with the Florida Highway Patrol. Oh, nine years, I'm sorry. And he is a traffic homicide investigator. So if we have some questions here tonight that I can't talk about or I can't answer, I'm going to use my great resource back there. But I brought him here because I want you to understand, this is the quality of officer that you have out here. This guy has more certifications in traffic than the majority of our police officers do. And he sees the issues and saw the issues immediately when he joined up with us. So let's go back to speed. You're 30 miles an hour out there. General rule of thumb is usually we allow 10 miles an hour. If you go down the expressway, troopers generally allow 10 miles an hour. If you go down US-1, City of Miami, Miami-Dade County, that's the general rule. But if you take a look on Camden Boulevard in that short stretch and you think about how many pedestrians walk that roadway, how many kids try to cross that roadway, allowing anything on that roadway takes you from a five-out-of-10 chance of that kid surviving to a one-in-10 chance of that kid surviving. So my officers aren't going to give that 10 miles an hour. They're not going to give that five miles an hour. They're out there with their radar, and if they see somebody violating the speed laws on Camden or some of our interior streets that are 20 miles an hour, folks, that's all they are. You can walk 20 miles an hour if you're fast enough. Yet our vehicles don't do that. And think about how narrow our roadways are. Think about how dark our roadways are at nighttime and the curves in the roads depending whether you're on Cypress or wherever you're at. So when you can't see anything in front of you, 30 feet in front of you, if you're doing 30 miles an hour in those backstreets, you are a killing machine. So therefore, again, there's zero tolerance for those types of violations. The simple running of a stop sign. I would love for you all to one day come to Village Hall, stand on the second floor overlooking the community center and watch those stop signs. And you would see about a 90% complete disregard for stop signs. And unless my cops sit out there, which they do, it's like hitting ducks in a pond. People don't stop at those stop signs. And you know what one of them told our cop? They said, "Why are you writing me this ticket? There's nothing going on out here." What they fail to realize is that community center is the hub of Key Biscayne activity. That is the hub of where our children go every day to enjoy the rest of their day during summer when they're off of school. So how many children are out there on bikes, on foot? That's where we do all our work with our senior citizens. They attend their classes. They do all the wonderful things that the village offers them. They're trying to cross the street at the same time. And yet people say that they're not doing anything wrong by running that stop sign, and they challenge our police officers in that way. So that is a dynamic that people don't see that we see. And that's something that we try to explain to them. Unfortunately, if it's enforcement, that's the way it goes. If it's through some type of education, we've done that. We'll continue to do that. And I think that's a strong directive from a lot of people here. They want more education. So my question is, how much education do you have to give? If you have somebody come here from another state, they have to get a Florida state driver's license if they become residents here. They have to take a test. That stop sign in that test says "stop," period. It doesn't say "think about it, maybe I will." It's not a traffic suggestion. It's an official traffic control device, and that's what it's saying, but we don't see it that way. We were talking about with the former ambassador and council member Laredo about driving habits in some of the South American countries, Latin American countries, which he is quite educated on. There's very little, if any, traffic enforcement out there. Think about a cop who makes about $10 a month, and is he going to worry about traffic safety? He's just trying to survive, let alone go out there and take care of traffic. So what happens to that person? They're used to no enforcement. Also, in a lot of these places, if you are wealthy, then you absolutely don't have to worry about enforcement. And therefore, when you come to a different country, sometimes the mindset is different. But those folks coming in here have to take that same driver's test to get a Florida driver's license. And the "stop" still means "stop" regardless of their social status, economic status, or anything else that goes with it. So I am very proud of our police officers because they ignore all that, and that's not easy to do. A lot of times, we hear, "You should be out there for all the other drivers. We're Key Biscayners, and this is not for us." Well, it is for you. It's your families. It's your kids. I know I keep saying that over and over. It may sound redundant to you, but to see it every day and the continuation of this type of a driving attitude means we still don't get it. We brought Joe Cordino. Joe Cordino is the mayor in Pinecrest. I happen to live down south, so I'm very familiar with Pinecrest. He's also our traffic expert consultant, does consulting all over the United States on traffic. Pinecrest changed the entire dynamic of their village and their driving habits by doing one thing and one thing only. It is enforcement, 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 and everybody goes. And I've told this story a million times. I have a daughter, twice. She got tickets for speeding. I even had an ex-wife who got a ticket for speeding over there. But they don't care. And if you go to Pinecrest now, it's an amazing thing. The dynamic has changed. Traffic-wise, it's probably one of the safest places you could ever traverse. And they have cyclists, and they have a ton of kids over there. It's a huge family neighborhood once you get off of US-1. So it's all about enforcement. And he stood before council and he made it very clear. It's all about enforcement. They're relentless. They even have it on their stop signs. Traffic strictly enforced. We don't like signage here, but it's an important part of what we do. It's a reminder. That's all signs are. They're directives and they're reminders. So part of this pedestrian study, and I just want to talk on this a little bit because council is going to be bringing many of these recommendations to fruition, hopefully in the next year or so. There are 13 pedestrian crosswalks here in the village of Key Biscayne in this short space. The standard, the standard for roadways is they should be 600 feet apart. We have some of them so close to each other that it becomes extremely confusing to drivers as to where these pedestrians are coming from. In addition to that, we have very dark streets at night. And in the pedestrian crosswalks that don't have the flashing signals, it is very, very dangerous for people to cross, especially at some of these blind intersections like Grand Bay. Terrible. Sea view, very problematic. And this is where we've had a lot of our accidents. East Heather, think about that at nighttime when we've got kids at the park, many of them going back across east. They're either going to the condos, they're going to Holiday Colony, and they're crossing a dark street. And even with the flashing lights, look what happened last year when that beautiful little girl got hit by that motorcycle. Three vehicles did the right thing. One vehicle chose to ignore the law and struck this little girl. And by the grace of God, she's alive today. So that was a dynamic that we knew was happening, yet this was the way the roadway was designed. So they have given us suggestions to cut that almost in half. Now that may have a person, a pedestrian or a cyclist, have to go an extra 150 feet to the next pedestrian crosswalk. We're going to get complaints about that. It may inconvenience certain people, and I'll apologize upfront for that. But when you have traffic engineers tell you that the dynamics of this roadway are wrong and they're dangerous the way they are set up, then understand that these changes that we'll bring before council are changes that are for your safety and for your betterment and welfare. Sinage on Camden Boulevard, it's an overkill. We know it, but let me give you a brief history of the signage. When we started having tremendous issues with pedestrians and vehicles, we started putting a sign at every pedestrian crosswalk. "It's the law, stop for pedestrians." People ignored that sign. So we put in another sign. Now we put in a sign in the middle of the median, similar, but now it had a stop sign. "Stop for pedestrians." People ignored that. If you go down Camden Boulevard and you were to count all the signs, it would make you insane. You would need a calculator. Because we tried to do whatever we could piecemeal, one after another after another, just to get people to understand that they're supposed to stop for pedestrians. We finally were able to convince the county to give us one crosswalk with flashing lights. That still hasn't done the job. People talk about, "It's yellow. We don't know whether to stop or whether to not stop. We need red flashing lights. We need this. We need that." No, it's really simple. If there's somebody doing this or riding a bike and they want to go across, we are obligated by law to stop. It's probably that way in most states, but it is not that way here. Now, it falls on the pedestrian also, right? So if I'm at an intersection, I push the button and it's flashing, and I start to walk across the street and cars are coming, I have to be smart enough to realize it doesn't look like that car's going to stop. So it's incumbent upon me to make sure that vehicle stops. But how do you teach a kid that's six, seven years old to believe that driver is going to stop? They're doing all the right things like this little girl did. She did all the right things. She waited. The car closest to her stopped. She started to go. The car across the street coming out of East Heather stopped. She saw that. She continued to go. The car coming northbound stopped. She did everything right, and then the idiot on the motorcycle goes around, avoids everybody, tries to race through the intersection, hits the girl. But her mind wasn't into every vehicle. She's young. They don't think the way we think. And then we have people our age who just walk out in the street regardless of whether cars are stopping or not. So until we get that dynamic changed, if you go to California, I can assure you, do you know they don't even have marked crosswalks in most of the cities? Those people are so paranoid of seeing a person crossing, they don't need those reminders. It's amazing. Go to New York City and try to go through if you've got a pedestrian legally crossing that street. It just doesn't happen. They're taught and they believe in it and they appreciate public safety. So that's our Camden Boulevard pedestrian study in a nutshell. And the last dynamic that they wanted to offer was a reduction in speed, which we support. I've talked to the manager. I support it 100%. But that's not always our choice. It's a county roadway. It falls in line with a state park. There are several entities that have to be involved before we even think of it. There are several entities that have to be involved before we even think of doing that. Now, you have three and a half million cars every year drive from the entranceway to Keybuscane all the way through to the end. 3.5 million cars in your little village every year on Crandon Boulevard. It's stunning how many cars go there. Now, if they all did the speed limit, that would be great. They're doing better. If we reduced it to 25, it would make it safer. But we have clogged roadways, so there's going to be some angst about us doing that. These will be things, as the manager wants to say, "Take the show on the road." So we could have some workshops when we're ready to do that and get public input as to what they think, because the experts will be there to tell you that it's safer to get you to drive slower. But you've got to move traffic. And that's that balance that we're trying to do. So briefly, that's us. That's why we do it. That's how we do it. That's what we do. And now I offer it up to you. The forum is yours. Wait for the microphone, please.
Don Ellisberg, a very simple question. On the description of what happened at the yellow light thing and the young lady, the young girl who was hit, what happened to the guy who came through and hit her?
He was injured quite severely also. He was cited for a felony violation and for misdemeanor violation. It's still processing through the court. Those are--
So nothing's happened to him?
So far.
Okay. I think, I'm saying it very quickly. That's another point that flows out of all you've said is, if the people still take their tickets and go nowhere, I think that's another issue for you.
Well, it's a frustration for us, but we have to do our job, and we have to do our part. So our job is the enforcement. It's up to the courts to handle anything that comes afterward. And we go to court. When we go, we generally win. But the courts are so overwhelmed, and we've got so many lawyers. Who's a lawyer in this room? I know we've got lawyers in this room. Okay? Actually, that's a small number. I figured half the room was lawyers. But there are so many of these ticket clinics and things like that. And the magistrates, now, I'm not saying judges. I'm saying magistrates that are appointed to traffic court, unless it's felony traffic court, where they have a real judge. The magistrates have a docket every day, pages and pages long. And if an attorney shows up, says, "My person pleads guilty," but they don't want points, they don't want to have this on their license, they don't want this or that, the magistrate gives them a nice piece of fine, and they walk and they go, and nothing ever happens to them. However, felony traffic court has been different. For instance, some of the horrific incidents that have occurred on the causeway where we've lost cyclists, I've known that every one of those responsible have actually gone to jail. So, you know, when you up the level of the crime, and it is a crime at that point, the good thing is, is that through investigations such as Marcos is able to do, they're pretty dynamic in how you recreate a scene like that. And it's pretty strong evidence in the court of law, so it's very effective. But the rest of the things, sir, I know what you're saying, but I can't help that part. Next question.
Hi, Steve Takish here. Steve, how you doing?
Good, sir. How are you?
Two questions. One, why can't the Mazda light be activated? It would slow traffic down on that side of the island. And you had-- --something about everything being dark. I know it's probably a Public Works thing, but if the officers that are-- the night-- the public works department, when lights are out, there may be more lights lit on the key. Because the public works--
I'll answer your first question. Your first question. The Mazda intersection, years ago, there was a deal between the government and the Ocean Club that if the Ocean Club could build a certain amount of units, they would provide all the engineering needed and all the public works issues to make that a viable intersection. Somehow, some way, that never happened, and the light has been on flash ever since. When we looked at the new signalization that we're bringing to Keybuscane, this smart technology type of lights, the first thing they asked was, "Why is it always on flash?" Well, the answer is, if you open that box over there, there's nothing in the box. There are no underground engineering for pedestrians. There's nothing there. So the village will look at redoing that entire intersection at our own expense. However, I could tell you, even though you think that that's a critical area, the most fortunate part about that intersection is that reflects the least-- traffic, for the most part, has ended there unless they're going to the state park. And--
Which is where they speed up, right?
I understand. But we have had, if you looked statistically, very few issues. But that is a dynamic that we are going to fix down the road. Right now, we've got five active intersections that were in the process of redoing. And as soon as we get our permitting from the county, the company has all the hardware. They're ready to go. And hopefully, we should be getting that new signalization soon. And what was your second question, Steve? I'm sorry.
The lights.
Okay, the lights. We don't have that much street lighting in Keybuscane.
Well, you know, it's right on the corner, it's by the Ocean Club, right there. There's two lights out.
And I agree with that. You're right about our cops. And our cops do report to Public Works because we are the eyes out there at nighttime and will continue to do so. And if you see where there's actually a street light, and if you see it out, our communications area is open 24 hours a day, and we take messages for everybody. So if you don't want to leave a message for Public Works, you could call our dispatchers, Anytime, 24 hours a day, report a traffic light out, a street sign down, anything you need, and we will see that that gets to Public Works.
That's great.
And when it does get to them, sir, they're pretty responsible.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Good question, Steve. Anne.
Hi.
Happy-- Happy New Year.
I had a problem with Crandon and Harbor and Ocean, that intersection when you come in, because hanging out there for a while, there's farmers that make right turns and never look. They make right turns. There's people crossing, whether they have the right of way or not. I mean, there are people-- more people hurt there. So I'd really like to see more enforcement--
We actually, Anne, have the strictest enforcement there of all. It's called a red light camera, and we average about 2,000 red light tickets a year that are legitimate, that get paid, that go through, that aren't challenged, and people continue to do that. The idea of not stopping at a red light, when the law is very clear, by the way, you have to stop, look, and make your turn, people don't seem to get it. But the enforcement there is better than just having a street cop out there. It's nonstop, 24 hours a day. But the blessing, I guess, of living in Keybuscane is you just pay the fine and you go on your way, because it's not points. It actually doesn't, you know, put points on your driver's license, so-- Yes, ma'am. Good evening.
Hi. As a fairly new resident of Keybuscane, I'd like to know what the rules and regulations are of the golf carts. I've seen many things that are shocking to me, such as children driving them on Crandon Boulevard, et cetera.
Okay. Golf carts. So that has been a point of contention for many people here. And I brought some statutes that we have here and things of that nature. But let me tell you, people think that we don't do any traffic enforcement with golf carts. So I brought some numbers here. And in 2017, we wrote 166 citations to golf carts. In 2018, we've written 177 citations, 120 warnings, and we've made 297 actual stops of golf carts, just in 2018 alone. So we're very active with golf carts. But they are problematic. Number one, you've got to have a driver's license. Period. And if you do, if you do have a learner's permit, if you're 15 years old and you have a learner's permit, you are allowed to drive up until 10 o'clock as long as you have a licensed driver in the passenger seat over the age of 21. So they can't have big brother, big sister, who are 17 and have a driver's license. They have to be over the age of 21. And as far as the juveniles driving them and people underage, many of our citations are for that. Our critical issue with underage children driving golf carts is that they're allowed to by their family members. So as part of this new enforcement detail, we're going to do several additional things when we stop a juvenile. So first of all, again, let's go back to the juvenile mind, 14, 15 years old. They're not thinking the same way we all think. So to actually hurt that child, give them a ticket that may hurt them to get an actual driver's license a year, two years down the road, is not something that we take lightly. So there's other avenues for us to do. Number one, we're allowed to cite the parents, two different ways. And so the parents can expect to start getting tickets. Number two, if we can't reach a parent and that golf cart is left out in the open, we're going to have to tow it. For anybody who's had to go down into the dregs of Miami and get one of your vehicles after it's been towed out of a parking lot or whatever it is, and go into some of these tow yards, it's an extremely unpleasant, very expensive, cash-only way of doing business. And we feel that if we do warn the child, cite the parent, tow the golf cart if applicable, because if they can park it, or if we get ahold of a parent, they come get it, and they have a driver's license, we have to afford them that opportunity by law. That's how we're going to, you know, deal with this matter. But it's problematic. Again, the cop has to be in the right place at the right time just doing that. I think somebody brought up, we had a roll call the other day where one of our new council members attended the roll call, Councilman Laredo. And one of our officers asked, "Is there anything the council can do about the golf cart ordinance and keeping golf carts off of Crandon Boulevard in particular?" That's up to the council. And I would suggest that if the village people feel strongly about that, they would contact their council members and see what could be done. From a law enforcement perspective, in order for us to write a citation to a golf cart driver on Crandon Boulevard for not doing what they're supposed to do, which we all know they're only supposed to enter, stay in the right lane of traffic, make the first exit off of that roadway, and that's what our golf cart ordinance says. But again, right place, right time. The cop has to observe where that golf cart comes out of, follow that driver, and then catch them doing the wrong thing. And that's how that part works. So it is problematic. We are doing enforcement on it, but like everything else, as dangerous as the golf carts are, the danger unfortunately is to the person on the golf cart. When you're talking about, "Would I rather stop an SUV driving erratically, doing 50 miles an hour with a parent watching the phone and the kids climbing all over the seats, or a golf cart that's in the left lane slowing down traffic, going two intersections past," I'm going to say that my officers would prioritize the more dangerous. However, it's somebody's choice to get in a golf cart, allow their domestic help to put a one-year-old child in a golf cart and drive around exposed to the universe. I don't see the logic in it, but it's not my choice. So that's kind of how we're looking at the whole golf cart issue.
Two thoughts. One, based on what Anne is describing, can we put a note, turn on red at that corner? The corner of Harbor, coming and turning right on Harbor, if that's really being abused and people aren't stopping. In terms of the golf carts, I have noticed more underage drivers on Fernwood than I have on Crandon. And at this particular point, after official notices would go out, I don't really care if the kids have to wait six months or a year to get their driver's license. They might as well learn at 12, 13, and 14 that there are rules for driving vehicles. And if you're old enough to sit behind the wheel and drive, you're old enough to understand that you either have a license or you don't have a license, and you're of the age that can do it or not. And the other day, I saw a mother with two children in the front seat, three children in the back seat, and an infant on her lap driving a golf cart. So I would venture to say that it could be overkill, but I would start using the Islander News and the Village Connect to start sending out things that are being seen, things that the police have been ordered to issue tickets for. And maybe just getting a ticket and a fine is not enough. Maybe you can't drive--
Well, I appreciate what you're saying, Nancy, and thanks for bringing all these things up. And I sure wish you would have called us when you saw that, because maybe we could have caught them in the act. And that's another thing I would suggest to people. I happen to be on a pedestrian chat on my phone, and it's amazing how many things people see during the day that they talk about amongst themselves, and yet they don't call the police. They see somebody in a handicap spot. I think there's a chat going around, "Bad parkers," or something like that. And instead of calling us, and I'm a freak about handicap parking, because I've had family members that have needed it. So that's one of our most expensive fines, $275, something like that, just for first time you park in a handicap spot. We like to do those things, but we need to be contacted when those things happen. As far as young people go, we stop many young-looking people. They aren't all 13 and 14 years old. And that's something, I've had this discussion with my cops, and I see the same thing. I'm with you. I'm not a blind guy. And they're out there making these stops, but they have licenses, and they don't necessarily have to look like some GQ guy or some model that's mature. They could be 16, 17 years old and look much younger. So the idea is to have officers out there. Again, we have X amount of staffing. We have four cops on an average out there on the street. And now we're fortunate to add to that by having our traffic cops, and we will be doing a whole lot more enforcement, including those types of things. So thanks for bringing that up, and next time, give me a call. Thank you.
And letting other people know that when they see things like that, they have to, we have to call.
And by the way, we do do Village Connect. I brought a copy of this, because we do do it sporadically, probably every six months. We'll put something out on all the golf cart rules and just kind of be a reminder to people. We send memos home with our kids to their parents, talking about traffic safety, bicycle safety, helmet using. If you look outside when you leave here, you're going to see dozens of different pamphlets that we provide our kids to bring home, that we have stood out, me and my staff and our officers stood in intersections, handing them to people, drivers, as they go by, and getting that wonderful look like people taking the thing and it goes from left arm to the right arm. However, we'll continue to try and educate, and that is an important tool. I agree with you, Nancy. But we also, again, it's seeing and enforcing. And if you see it and you could call us, that'll be great. I think we've got a question. He's been waiting.
One, two, and then three.
Okay. Sir?
Chief Press, we've talked about this--
Yes, we have.
Two years ago, we met at this room, and we decided, with the backing of the council's-- support, that we were going to enforce all ruse, rules of the golf carts. Mostly the seatbelt rule. Now, how many people in this room know what the violation is for not having a seatbelt on the golf cart? Anybody?
It's the same as a car.
How much is it?
It's the same as a car.
$160, right?
$129.
$129?
Non-moving violation.
$129. What about moving?
Seatbelt violation is not a violation. It's a non-moving violation, and they're not gonna pay. Any non-moving violation is $129.
Any moving violation starts at 45.
Thank you. Thank you very much, officer. But you say, nobody in this room knew that. And when you tell people that if they don't...
It's gonna cost them $100.
Are you crazy? That doesn't happen. And we've had this conversation before. Nobody in this town knows what the rule is on that. All right? I don't, every rule in this county regarding all the traffic situations, lights, stopping lights, double lanes, you name it, we all know it. All right? If we choose to violate, that's fine. But we don't put on seatbelts, especially with our kids. That's a travesty. And it was given to you by this council. They said, we want you to enforce 100%. Is that correct?
Correct.
I want it to happen, please. I mean, I see it today. I went by the school twice on a circle. They were shooting...
Radar.
Right.
I hope that's all they were shooting.
That was what they were doing. No, no, they were doing the radar shoot. All right? But there were people running around that circle, picking up their kids without seatbelts. All right? And they never said anything to them. All right? And that's wrong. I made this comment to you a year ago. I almost killed a kid that was about to fall off a cart. We had four kids that are still in the hospital, I believe, in northern Florida, and they're suing the town. We know that, for that. And we're going to get sued, God forbid, if we lose a kid, because we're liable for it.
By the way, I saw a police stop in a golf cart. You're in this location, you're parked here tonight.
Awesome. Thank you, Ann.
Hi, Chief. John Hoffman. Just had two questions. One, I haven't seen the study, and I showed up 10 minutes late. Is there any discussion in this new study that was done about extending the green paint in the bike lanes from where it ends all the way to the park?
Absolutely. That is one of the priorities of the study. Yes, sir.
And then my second question is, with the traffic coming in to the Key, right where Calusa is, right where the old circle is, is the village going to do anything to try to slow the traffic down there? Because it seems to be coming in at an extremely high rate of speed.
If you follow the speed signs on Camden Boulevard...
It should be 35.
As you go from 45 to 40...
Right.
To 30, then you wouldn't have those issues. But people do maintain usually a 40 mile an hour speed. Now, if you'll notice that our smart trailer, as you come in, and it gives you that warning about strict enforcement, if you're going over 30 miles an hour, it lights up with red and blue police lights on it. I see that often, because people could be doing 32, 33 miles an hour. That's generally not our jurisdiction. We do own Calusa as far as maintaining Calusa Park. We do have rights on the causeway due to our inter-local agreement with Miami-Dade County. So we have a right to extend our police officers out onto the causeway. We have done that. We do DUI enforcement out there. We do speed out there. But folks, our biggest problem is here within the confines of the Village of Key Biscayne. And unless I get 10 more cops where I can worry about the causeway, which is the county's problem, bigger than anything, and still maintain the safety aspect of Key Biscayne, that's when that could happen. But in the meantime, I do need to focus our resources where they could best be used and best serve our actual, you know, citizens who live here.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And here's the mayor.
Hi, Drew Panahi. I guess one is, your dare officer that's at the public school, does he talk to the children about, like...
All the time.
Okay. I figured as much, but just wanted to check. And then second is, what kind of transparency do you have with...
Like, what kind of collision-related accidents?
There are on the Key. We all know about, like, the more publicized version, like the one that you talked about with the little girl and the blinking yellow crosswalk, but more minor-related ones.
Well, for instance, in the past four years, we've had 192 accidents here in Key Biscayne. 36 of those accidents have occurred with pedestrians or cyclists on Camden Boulevard. The 192 total is well below the national average for 3.5 million cars that come and go every year. However, the 36 pedestrian and cyclist accidents are 19% above the national average, and extremely critical and a huge red flag for safety. And that's why we did this pedestrian study for Camden Boulevard. And that's why I am hoping that in this year that we enact a lot of the changes that are being made. That's a great question. And the majority of our accidents, believe it or not, happen in our parking lots. If you've ever noticed, you come out, your car's hit, it's banged, it's deadened, it's dinged. People hit each other all the time in our parking lots, and we have to write that ticket. But here's a dynamic that causes a lot of these cycling and pedestrian accidents on Camden. When you're coming out of those parking lots, and if you're going to go south, what's the natural thing you're going to do? You're going to look to the left to see if cars are coming. Well, folks, we've got kids and pedestrians on those sidewalks, and we're not looking to the right. And they put signage there. They've done a real good job of reminding us to stop before the sidewalk, look both ways. But that's where the majority of those accidents happen. So the reminder to be safe when we're leaving and going into, by the way, when was the last time you were making a right turn into the square, into the Galleria, and you actually checked your side view, rear view mirror before you made that right turn? Most people don't do it. The cyclists are vehicles. They have a right to be in that cycling lane. And it's our job as drivers to look to make sure that they're not beside us when we're making that right turn. And that's created several of our cycling accidents. Unfortunately for us, most of them have been minor injuries, thank God, but it's a public safety issue, no doubt. And by the way, I did want to say something about, there's a group called Bike 305, and it's led by a woman by the name of Sue Kowalski. She is the president of the Everglades Cycling Club. And she met with myself and the manager this week. She had to be at a meeting of their club tonight because they are electing their officials. But she talked about one thing in particular, the fact that this, the Everglades Cycling Group is probably the biggest defenders of traffic safety in South Florida. They refuse to engage in some of the idiot acts that we see some of these pelotons doing. And they've been the spokesperson for reasonable cycling and vehicle safety. And she said something that I thought was really unique. She said that when she rides and when her team rides, they ride through the eyes of a vehicle driver. She said she's terrified when she comes on a cyclist on the roadway, because she doesn't know what that cyclist is going to do. And she is a cyclist, and it scares her to death. And you know, that engagement of, are they going to pull out? Are they going to break through the pack? Are they going to do all these different things? Causes concern. Now, if you've got this device going on in your ear, and you're not paying attention, and that cyclist does something, your response time is limited to nothing. And that's where we've had some of our cycling issues on the causeway. But I love the idea that she said they want to be safe, they want to see it through drivers' eyes, but they do have a right to share the road. So when we get angry and we're dealing with cyclists, and we think they have no right, and why are they here, and why are they doing what they're doing, there's a lot of good, safe riders out there that just want to enjoy this gorgeous causeway in this island that you all are blessed to live in. They're trying to do it the right way, and it's incumbent upon drivers to make it just as safe for them as they need to make it for the drivers. Next question. Yes, ma'am?
Here. Good evening. Utah Campiani. I've been a resident here now for six years on the Key. And I have a comment regarding the crosswalks on Camden Boulevard. I'm walking every morning between 7:30 and 8:30. I come from the Ocean Club, and then I cross at Grand Bay over to the park, because then I walk around the park.
Okay.
And I hardly have ever any cars stop when I want to cross. Usually then I have to wait until somebody, until there's a brake, there was a traffic light, and so on. In December, I saw there was a lot of reinforcement officers at that timeout, which was great. They were looking for traffic violations. As you said, it's all about reinforcement. And I had two situations where I had a police car very close by. Once he was stopped in the second, but the third driver in another lane just drove by, and there was no reaction. There was always also a car sitting there on the middle lane, in the middle of the village green. And I was, at some point, I said I'm going to go up to see if there is even somebody in that car, because so many days, no one stopped. And I never saw a reaction. So you say it's not ideal, the situation with the crossings. I know there are too many, but I think until you don't resolve it and you take them away, at least you should reinforce that people stop, especially at the time where kids go to school. They bike, they go to school. Eight o'clock in the morning, it's peak time. And I think that's when people need to see there is reinforcement. If I can drive through the crosswalks and nothing happens to me, I don't stop.
I totally understand. And I could tell you that I'm not there for every engagement that happens. I would like to see what you're talking about. But when they're in that intersection, they're working speed. At that point in time, they're not looking behind them or looking for pedestrians. We have cops that do different details every day. So a lot of times, they'll just be working radar and looking for speed, especially in the morning, because like I said before, speed is the number-one killer. And that's what we focus on. We prioritize things. I hate to think that a cop missed an opportunity to write somebody a ticket if they violated that pedestrian safety thing. And I apologize for that. And I wish we were perfect. We're not. But we're working on it, and we're pushing our officers to do more and more and be as active as they possibly can. And by the way, sometimes that is a dummy car. And sometimes it's just put out there to keep people aware that there's a cop car out there, because we just can't simply be everywhere all the time. But we're striving to get better, and hopefully, one day, you'll be able to say we actually did it. And one suggestion to you, ma'am, if you could avoid crossing at Grand Bay, under any circumstance, that is the most horrific pedestrian crosswalk that we have. It simply makes no sense. It's a tragedy waiting to happen. And I wish I could obliterate it right now, because it's just, it's the worst one we have. And by the way, the traffic study, that was their opinion, that how could they have put something there without, you know, really thinking that thing through?
Okay. So, thank you. This is, and welcome to the new police officer. This is a brief story, and it's something that happened last week, but there's a question tied to it at the very end. And it's very much related to a change in behavior from a community that I'm aware of. So last week, we were here with my mother-in-law, two daughters, and we were crossing Windixie. I actually went to the police station that evening, because it was very concerning that a car continued and did not stop, and we followed the rules. But what ended up happening, as we approached the middle of the intersection on Windixie and the west side of Camden, is my mother-in-law made sure that we all stopped in the middle, and she was trying to pull something out of her purse, because in a particular town that she's from, a city in fact, is the mayor took it upon himself to make a cultural change in people's behavior. And so he started with a small pilot program, and this is about thinking out of the box a little bit and changing people's behavior. And what he ended up doing was, he enabled enough people in a particular district in this community to have whistles with them, or whistles or lights that would blink. And the way that worked is, if a pedestrian was crossing, and these behaviors from motorists were not correct, they would hear the whistle if they could, a lot of motorcyclists themselves in Columbia, or they would see the blinking light in their rearview mirror. And I think over an 18-month period, there was a clear difference in the behavior of motorists. And culturally, over the last 12 years, there's been a change in the entire city's dynamic. And it started with a small pilot program. So my question now is, let me think a little bit out of the box, and I have a couple of ideas in mind, is, and it starts with, it starts with a question about crossing guards, adult crossing guards on Camden. Because if there's a way to think about the cost of that labor versus an officer's time, and the cost tied to an officer's daily wage, or weekly wage, or hourly wage, and you can think about adult crossing guards that would serve that type of purpose, to reculturalize or rebrand or behaviors for motorists as they're going, because the, and I see it, I cross twice a day, Camden Boulevard, walking. And I see that, unfortunately, I'm not blaming anybody. It's a lack of resources, time commitments, et cetera. I just don't see enough deterrents on police. So the question is, is there a way to think out of the box and think about adult and sporadically placed crossing guards, or a method of a whistle, or something that could adjust people's behavior? Just thoughts?
I think those are great questions. There's always opportunities to think out of the box. And we're not the catch-all. That's why we're having this meeting tonight. And it would be something that we would, you know, that could be presented to the manager and the council on whether they would fund a program like that. They would have to be trained, they would have to be certified, but most definitely would cost you much less than a police officer would. But that would have to be a decision by council. But I will tell you that there was, a few years back, I did think out of the box, and I heard about these pedestrian flags that people were using in communities all through the United States. And there would be a bucket on one side of the street and a bucket on the other side of the street. And they were these huge pedestrian flags. They would grab it, be very visible, okay, cross the street, and then put it back on the other side. Two weeks later, we had no flags. And from what I understand, those flags became an item of collectors here on Key Biscayne for our young key rats. So we have at times thought out of the box. We did a study on whether we could bring in traffic enforcement specialists. But they have to have the same traffic certifications, excuse me, that police officers do. So again, these are monetary costs, but I like your idea. We currently contract for our school crossing guards with a company out of California. They've done a really good job around our schools. They're not exceptionally expensive, and maybe I can take a look at that and approach our council with it and think of that dimension. I don't think the whistles will do us too much good over here, because everybody uses air conditioning, and they have stereos, and they have phones. But I think something like a crossing guard that's highly visible. I love the idea of a flashing light, as long as you don't anger the person, because we all know about angry drivers here in South Florida. And those are dynamics that I consider. Unfortunately, that's part of the mindset of driving in South Florida. It's angry, it's dangerous, and if you decide to say something to a driver, sometimes road rage can turn deadly. So you have to be very careful about how you approach other drivers. You don't know who you're dealing
I for one am super grateful for the crossing guards, especially at the same intersection that you're talking about. I have seen so many near misses there. A lot of young kids coming out of Ocean Lane Drive and turn right on red, on green, on whatever, no color, any color, they're just flying toward school, they're in a hurry, they're preoccupied. So back to that intersection about the smart lights, is there something, some way, that, because they can turn right on green, and the crossing light is also green. So you have pedestrians crossing on Crandon, this is the first intersection of Key Biscayne, you have pedestrians, usually kids, crossing, and kids coming out and turning right to leave the island. And I'm just wondering if there's a way to make it so that there's a red light for everybody that's driving, and maybe just a pedestrian green for the kids to cross without people turning right on them, because there's really no correlation between stopping on red, let alone stopping on green if there's pedestrians crossing.
It's a great question, and I'll tell you how these things are determined. The county has to and has done several traffic engineering studies on Crandon Boulevard throughout the years that I've been here. Traffic is decided by several factors. It's timing, the FDOT laws of the state of Florida determine how long a light could be red, yellow, green, how long pedestrians have to cross. These things are all predetermined. They can be messed with, a few seconds here, a few seconds there. Officer Diaz, correct me if I'm wrong, but these things are all set in stone, and then vehicle counts, how long it takes somebody to get through an intersection. All of this is done through Miami-Dade County Traffic Engineering Department. And they, to lock a major intersection at the very area where people exit and people enter the Key, could create a backlog that would be insurmountable throughout the rest of the day. And the idea of the smart lights and this new improved adaptive technology is not going to be the panacea. It's not going to make our roads perfect, that we all slide in and slide out. But what it does is it reads car flow, and it counts cars, and it determines which lights should stay on longer and other lights changing. And those young people or adults, whoever it is that is making that right turn, and the pedestrians still, no matter what, have the right of way, no matter what, unless they're jaywalking, and they themselves are violating the pedestrian walkway. So thank you for that question. Who's next?
Hi.
Hi.
Hello. So I am a part-timer. So I come, you know, we have a place here, we come in the winter, we come in the summer. And just tonight, coming to this meeting, because I was off the Key, I'm passing where the Grand Bay crossing is, the lights go off. It's been, you know, a couple of months since I remember what that, you know what I mean? I just think it was very telling, because I looked to see who was crossing, and it was so dark where they were crossing, that I thought, maybe this is a fluke, maybe there isn't anyone crossing. There was a kid on a, I don't know, what are those, like a skateboard kind of thing? So I guess he was waiting, sort of in the dark. So it was like a chicken game, you know what I mean, like who's going to go? I didn't know he was there. He came out, I mean luckily, I just sit, because I'm sort of, you know, paying attention, but I just thought, wow, why don't they have really strong lights where the crossings are? Because I looked, and I still didn't see him. So that's kind of, you know, that's an issue right there at Grand Bay. I mean, the lights are flickering, but where I'm looking where he is, he's sort of in those bushes, you know, on the sidewalk.
I know exactly where you're referring.
So I thought that was really dangerous. Although, I mean, I see things dangerous every day, because I'm a big, I'm always on my bicycle.
You weren't talking about Grand Bay, though. You were talking about the village green.
Oh, sorry, it is, sorry, it's, sorry, sorry, sorry. It is, sorry, you're right, you're right, sorry. See, that's, you're right, it is in front of.
Village green.
The village green, sorry. Okay. And then the other thing is, I was, well, two or three things. One is, I don't know if you talked about this, because I was late, but are you thinking about any kind of barrier between the bike lane and the road? Like those little, any kind of little?
There are, and I'm glad you asked that question, because I've asked several people about that, several experts about that, including Ms. Kowalski, the cyclist. And the idea of a structured barrier, a Jersey wall, so to speak, aesthetically is not acceptable to anybody, economically even more unacceptable to everybody. It literally confines yet makes that traverse of that cyclist or that pedestrian much safer. There are different ways of doing it, like they've done it along Crandon Causeway. So you've got the little strips in the road, the, what is the sound they made, what do they call those things?
Rumble strips.
Rumble strips that awaken a driver or alert a driver when they're not paying attention, that they've actually entered the area. We've got the green paint that we have a very strong intention of doing. There have been the idea of using stanchions, but stanchions, again, do not stop anything one way or another. They're critical to the eye, but at times, they're more dangerous, because if somebody has to move or do something of that nature, get out of the way of somebody else, they create an incident. So I don't think you'll see that, but I think you'll see the green, I think you'll see the rumble strips. And depending on the type of lighting they put, and if you see toward the end of the roadway, when they first did those lights around the big curve there, past the golf course, it was magnificent. Those lights are extremely expensive. People have taken them, they replaced them, they take them, they replace them, and they're hard to maintain. So as good as it is, again, we live in a place where people do strange things, but we are trying to do whatever we can to identify those, you know, safety.
Yeah, I'd take those rumble things, I'll take anything. I just think nothing is no good.
Understood.
Only paint, it doesn't really help.
I agree.
Also, when you do those crosswalks, are there going to be any lights from maybe the ground, you know, coming up? Because again, I see the flashing up here, you're sort of out of it. I've been in many places where there's light on the ground, that really is effective.
It is effective. It's also a decision of council and of the citizens of Key Biscayne to want that. I've brought a lot of these potential changes to council before, and there are people who feel we have too much lighting, people who feel we don't have enough lighting, and those are decisions that are made well above my pay grade. But I would suggest that you reach your council member and talk to them about the, because there are several communities, especially on the west coast, Marco Island, places of that nature that use them, they're very dynamic. They're also, they could create issues for certain drivers, and that has been one of the complaints against them, especially at nighttime when they're extremely bright. It could cause a blinding effect, depending on the lights that they use. So there's good and bad to everything, but that's up to our village leaders and you all to make those decisions.
Okay, last thing. When you were discussing that there is an issue with so many people not looking the other way, you know, at a?
Yes, ma'am.
That happens daily on my bike, and I'm now very, you know?
Aware.
Aware, because it's happened so many times, and I'm not going to, you know, depend on that driver ever. But my, but the kids will. And the problem with me, I'm saying is, so I know you stated the problem, and I wasn't here, maybe you discussed it before I got here, but what is some potential solutions to that problem, besides a sign? Anything else?
Drivers being alert. I, you know?
That doesn't work.
I can educate people all till I'm blue in the face. And at the end of the day, you get behind the wheel of a 6,000-pound bomb in an area where streets are tight, pedestrians and cyclists are everywhere, speeds are supposed to be maintained, laws are supposed to be observed, and it's incumbent upon that driver at some point in time. There are only, I talked about it earlier, we have sign overload. We have so many signs, it confuses people on Crandon as to what's where, when it's coming, how it's coming, which is part of the dynamic of this study, that if you have too much, it actually interferes with the job that you set out to do in the first place. But it all comes down to one thing, you put your key in that car, you turn that car on, and you're responsible for being safe out there. But if you're on a bike, that's a vehicle, you're responsible. If you're walking down the street, you're responsible. If we're parents, we're responsible for teaching our kids safety. I see kids that shouldn't be alone, let alone crossing that street by themselves. It makes me insane. But I can only do so much, our cops can only do so much. Parents have to take some responsibility and be more protective of their kids. And I'm going to say that without care, because I feel that way. I see way too much of youngsters, way too young, to be out there on their own, crossing a major highway. I don't care if they're all obeying the speed limit. It's three and a half million cars on that roadway every year, 1.1 miles. That is more density than the city of Chicago, what we have here in Key Biscayne. So when you think of it in that respect, it's got to be dependent on people using their common sense and doing the right thing. But thank you for your questions. Do we have other questions before we close up? Stan, you've been very patient, hold on a minute. Stan's been really patient. And then I'll get to you.
Coming out of Grand Bay, there's a sign that says "right turn only," but everybody makes a left turn. We tried to get that changed and put in something of no left turns, and the county or DOT turned it down. How can we, you want to save people, you got to make them turn right, come around, make U-turn.
There are certain things, Stan, you're absolutely right, that we have tried to over the years. We keep going back to the county, requesting engineering changes to the street. The county, when it comes to their traffic division, is just as shorthanded as your government is here. It's typical government everywhere. They get to us when they can. They're extremely rigid about making any changes on our roadway. I don't understand it. I see the viability of what you're saying. It purely is a safety issue. It is on several areas. There should be right turns only, that would alleviate a lot of our traffic issues. We could drive up the street, make U-turns, things like that. These are things we've approached the county over and over and over. They've come, they've done their traffic counts, and again, they're engineers. So imagine that they're looking at this thing as a design piece, X amount of vehicles, have X amount of time to traverse. They do the formulas, they do their math, they see how many actual accidents occur, regardless of, oh my God, that was close, those don't count. And then they make their determination. And it's like the traffic signals. We're the last on their list to put the new adaptive technology in. It's not because we're Key Biscayne, it's because fortunately, we have the least amount of serious accidents on that roadway in all of Miami-Dade County. So they're prioritizing communities and intersections based on one thing, serious accidents, not on your convenience or my convenience or anything else. So we'll continue to do that. Part of this study did look at that. They are approaching county traffic engineers. But again, this is a process that's going to go through the year as incremental, with the blessing of our council as it goes along.
Can I be a crossguard in the meantime?
Sure, absolutely. Thank you, Stan.
The other is, Sunday, we were driving out, and a herd of bikers near Key Colony going through the red lights. And you would have made a fortune on Sunday.
Well, I didn't bring my cycling stats here. I could tell you that the cyclists think we overkill on our citations to the cyclists. I would say that we're just as tough on them when we observe them. And we don't catch everyone. That is, again, right place, right time, and I'd like to do the math better for you, Stan. I've got no excuses, other than I wish we could get them all. And over time, hopefully, we will. Any other questions before we? And then we've got one more, and then we'll?
Carlos, Carlos Rivero, 141 Crandon.
Yes, sir.
Chief, thank you very much for holding this meeting tonight.
Thank you.
I thank also the manager and village council members that are here. I think that's a clear recognition that we have a problem, and a very big problem on the Key regarding traffic. I've been a resident since the year 2000. When I moved here in Key Biscayne in the fall of the year 2000, you were talking about Pinecrest. That is what I remember here in Key Biscayne back then. You had one certainty when you crossed the tollway, that if you broke a traffic law, you were going to get a ticket. It was a certainty of the fine that made people obey the law. That's at the end of the day, what happens. So there's one place in Miami where pedestrian crosswalks are obeyed in a heartbeat, and it's in the airport. You put one foot into that pedestrian walkway, and cars miraculously stop, and it's a miracle. It's because there's a cop always there, at the right time, at the right place, like you said many times tonight. So what I'm getting at is you need more police officers. There was a lot of talk last year when the budget workshops went going, were going on about the military, and the military, and it's going to rise, and it's going to go up, and this and that. Well, please raise it, but give us more cops. You know, we, there's no other way to do it, I don't see one. Then engineering, you've talked a lot about engineering. Our council needs to ask the engineers to engineer for pedestrians, not for cars. We have a heavy pedestrian village. So they need to, they need to rewire their brains. I'm an engineer, and I know how it works, I can relate to what you're saying, but you need to engineer for pedestrians. That is your customer, not the cars. Then the causeway. The causeway is no man's land. I drive out every day between 7:00 and 7:15 in the morning, and it's crazy. I try to obey the speed limit, but if you're going 45, 50 on the causeway, you're being run over. Okay? So it's a miracle that we haven't had more accidents in the causeway. So that's it. Thank you very much. Thank you for having the meeting, and thank you for your service to our community.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate that. And just to touch on the causeway, and we're kind of out of time here, so I'm going to close this out a little bit. The causeway itself is policed by three different entities. The county having the major jurisdiction, and the city of Miami having a very minor part at the very northern end, and Key Biscayne having the opportunity to police the entire causeway through interlocal agreements that we have. The county, on an average good day, the best day we could get from the county, you'll see two cops out there, period. That's all they have, that's all they give. That same group of police officers is also charged with the port of Miami, they're charged with the train stations throughout Miami-Dade County, and they're charged with Fisher Island. If Fisher Island needs somebody, because somebody called off sick, they take that cop, put him on Fisher Island. If the port is experiencing difficulties, they take that cop and put him at the port. And this is the last dynamic of that small group of police officers assigned to all those huge entities, and then you've got the causeway. So when you think about traffic enforcement out there, if it's not us, and it's been us many times in the past, but again, I'll tell you this, as much as I wish I could be out there, and when we are, we're pretty effective, I would prefer to see us in here and hope the county shows up, and hope the city shows up, and do it that way, unless, like you say, we get more officers that would be dedicated out there. And the tough part is, that's not our causeway. It should be policed heavier by the county. There are a lot of accidents out there, but these are not things that you control or I control. Maybe enough, you know, people who speak up, who knows? And there's budget issues everywhere. So I appreciate your questions, I appreciate your thoughts tonight. I thank you all for coming out, it tells me a lot. My number is 305-365-5503, that's my direct line to my office. My cell phone is 305-519-0801. I'll say it again, 305-519-0801. I live it, breathe it, and eat it 24 hours a day. So if you have an issue and you want I'll say it again, 305-519-0801. I live it, breathe it and eat it 24 hours a day. So if you have an issue and you wanna talk about things, feel free to call me, talk to us. You've got great cops out here like Officer Diaz and so many other men and women who are doing the very best they can. They're getting better by the day, we got a great team out here. We've got leadership from our managers and from our council members. We're all trying to make this a better community. And it takes one more thing, folks, it takes the people who live here to make it a great community. So God bless you all, have a great night and thank you.